I choose to believe. And you said, "It's what you choose to believe." I said, "I can't believe it." I said, "But me, myself personally, I believe that." So, you do, you take, take that power you want to take it. But I believe that. I see what happens. I, I've seen the things.
I mean, that's just pretty simple. First, Erica.
Yeah.
I mean...
Chief.
Merry Christmas.
Feliz Navidad is for us.
He looks navigating to you. Sounds like the mics are on.
Mics are on, so...
Why?
Because of the Christmas music.
Feliz Navidad.
I don't hear it.
They are on.
It's because it got loud in here.
How's that, how's that career get ended? Well, nice.
Here, Christmas music.
That's not very sincere, guys. Said there's no goodness. It's working.
I didn't say there was goodness in music. Goodness...
We work on that, we'll figure it out.
What happens when I put in a request to speak?
The third will be a full meeting altogether. All your stuff has to be December 28 at noon.
There we go.
Good afternoon, Merry Christmas, and welcome to the Boulder City Council. Today's agenda for December, Tuesday, December 19, 2017, at 3:00 PM, we will have the call to order and vacation by Councilmember Scott Erwin, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. Oh, we thank you for each person that is present at this council meeting today. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you've bestowed on our city, but mostly, Lord, for your son, Jesus, who you sent to save us. Lord, just give us wisdom in this council meeting today. And, Lord, just guide our, our city and our state. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin? Absent. Mr. Erwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 5, 2017, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So, ma'am?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Council, please cast your vote. Do we have any...
Council, we have one add-on today. It's going to be number 12, under new business. It is introduce an ordinance to limit vehicle access into Beauclaire subdivision, Bossier City, Louisiana. First reading.
Make the motion, we... Second.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Erwin. Have a motion and second. Council, cast your vote.
Make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you, Ms. Free. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Please cast your vote. Do we have any ceremonial matters today? And any students here? You are a student? Okay. All right. Welcome. You're the only student here? Anyone else? Okay. Please give us your, your name and your school.
My name's Hannah Smith. I go to Hardin High School.
Okay. Thank you for being here, Ms. Smith. We glad you are here at this meeting, the last meeting of the year for the City Council in 2017. Let's see. We have, under report, Ms. Fernandez, the financial director.
Good afternoon, Council. I've distributed the financial statements for November 2017. On page one, you can see that our revenues are at 102% of budget. And just the general fund ba- amount for that is at 97%. I added something new to this page. At the very bottom is the $3 CenturyLink fee that we started collecting. And so you'll be seeing that number on there moving forward. On page two are our expenditures, which are favorable at 94%.
Can I go back to the, the CenturyLink fee?
Yes, sir. I know that it was passed in June, but existing contracts did not include that fee. So we're just now getting to where the new contracts that were developed after June... We're now collecting on those. They, they pay me the day after the event. And we've already collected an additional $50,000 in December.
So it was everything after June, correct?
Contracts entered into with the production and performers.
After June.
Yes, sir.
They were just, also just, if the contracts were signed before we went to effect of this thing, they'd already been negotiated and they were signed before that. You know, they may, they may be next year. There was left off of those, too.
I think we've already run through, I can double check with Rebecca, but I think we've already run through all the ones that didn't include the fee. So now you're going to see that number start growing.
Well, the rest, I know, coming in February, didn't include that.
Oh, they didn't?
I, I'd like to, if we can get a handle on that, you know?
Yeah, because if, if they were signed before it went into effect, I mean, that's why they, some of them, they negotiated. Do you mean that...
That's, that's right. There are going to be some, you, you can look forecast on the calendar. There's going to be some stuff that they book two years out or a year out. And anything that was booked prior to the ordinance coming into effect is going to be excluded from the $3 fee.
But, I mean, we, we can validate that, is what I'm asking.
Yes, sir. They have signed contracts.
And, and then, have, have we gone out for the bonds yet?
Oh, yes, sir. We've received the fund, well, the funds are...
Okay, that's what I thought. So we've got...
The funds are at Whitney. We haven't started drawing on it because we haven't completed a project yet.
And when does our payments start?
Uh, they started...
They, they, we've already been paying. And where are we paying that from?
We're paying it from the bond fund.
Hotel motel thing? Or the CenturyLink fund?
Yes, the CenturyLink fund.
All right. I'll get with you on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Page two are expenses, favorable at 94% of budget. Page three is our sales tax. You can see our year-to-date, November 30 collections are 2.3% above prior year at $951,000. Again, favorable. Page four, the Manning reports. We're at 667 employees to 665 last month. And had we had all of those positions filled for 11 months, we would still have a favorable expenditure budget. And the final page is our water and sewer. We're a little bit under on year-over-year, and that's due largely to debt service, going up approximately $50,000 to last year. But everything else is favorable. Year-to-date, we're favorable at 141%. To budget, we're favorable at 111%. And the rolling 12-month, we're favorable at 142%. So, all looks good. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If no comments, we will move to unfinished...
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate an additional $100,000 in the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund to supplement the previously appropriated $600,000 to be used for environmental studies, right-of-way surveying, and other contingencies for the Viking Drive improvements as it runs from Airline Drive to Swan Lake Road. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments from anyone? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached contract for professional services with Ginger Adam Corley LLC for 2018. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, Council.
Adopt an ordinance amending Section 78-10 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances to comply with the municipal employees' retirement system of Louisiana requirements. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote, Council.
Adopt an ordinance granting an aerial easement over an alley located behind 145 Evans Place subdivision, a subdivision of Bossier City, Louisiana. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to transfer ownership of Louisiana DOTD, a section of Swan Lake SPUR in exchange for a portion of Louisiana 782-2. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of Lot 4 Commerce Industrial Park, Unit Number 2, to CJ Commercial Company LLC, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in connection therewith. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Last item under old business. Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote. New business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for Mike Wood Memorial Park renovations.
Council, the engineer's estimate for this job is $250,000. The budget is $300,000. And it's being paid from the 2016 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund. There are two addendums. The first addendum changed drawings in the project manual. And the second addendum was revision to the drawings in the project manual. Same thing. Okay. Our first bid is from A&amp;H Building and Construction. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $245,720. Next, we have Boggs and Poole Contracting Group, Inc. They, they acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $242,000 even. Next, we have Cochran Construction Company. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $301,884. Dale's Paving. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $272,634. Next is Douglas Construction and Remodeling Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $275,287. Hope Construction of Shreveport. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $271,000 even. Next is Testament Constructing, Construction Service. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $249,000 even. Next is Woods Contracting LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $279,880. Next is Eminem Builders. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $223,700. And the last one is from Whitlock and Shelton Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $258,000 even. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
So moved. Second.
Think you have a motion and second. Council, please cast your votes. Wanted to ask Mr. Hudson, on, on the renovation, will that include any type of security fence around the park? Do you know?
No, sir. New front entrance gate. But that's the only fencing on the whole project. Of course, the, the entire park is fenced.
Yeah. I thought you had some vandalism in the past there at that park. And, and they damaged property, kids, over, over the years.
Thank you. Was it that at the park at the school? Back at the people's houses?
I don't know. I thought it was that one.
We've had people come into the bathrooms and tear the sink off. It's what we've been handling for the last two incidents. But that's been basically the major part of it.
Yeah. So when you spend so much money and then you don't have it secured, then that's going to be a continuation. You know, might want to look at that.
Do we lock the bathrooms now?
No, sir. You have people come in after dark and walk the trail. You got walk-in gates at the front of it and at the rear of it. And they come after the lights are off and everything else. We get fussed at if we lock them up. We've tried that. People were using the walking trail. Need a place to go to the bathroom, so... It's kind of a catch 22.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next item?
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, 2004 Scott Street, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
We started this case on this house and sent the letter back on October 3. It came back just received on the 5. This house has no functioning heat, no functioning bathroom. There's the electrical problems, plumbing problems. It's ate up with termites. It's got rotted wood. The roof leaks. The ceiling's falling down inside. And the house is just unfit for anyone to live in.
Robin Hardfield, here to represent the owners.
Council, the owners, Luke and Bessie Caulfield, are deceased. Their successions have not been opened. We were able to locate their daughter, surviving child, in Dallas, and I talked with her at some length. She's aware of the condition of the property. She indicates she is not in a position to open up the successions nor undertake any of the repairs. And so she asked that I express that to you.
Make the motion that we proceed with demolition.
Second.
The, the person in the photograph, who, who is that?
That was a renter who was in the house at the time. There was him, a young lady, and was probably about a five, six-month-old baby in there.
Really? Do we, do we generally take pictures of persons in a dilapidated structure?
Normally, we don't. That's nothing normal. When we went back to take, take pictures when I posted it, he was up on the porch. And normally, it's something we don't have.
We have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Erwin, for demolition. Any comments? Anyone here on this item? Okay. Please cast your vote, Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for repairs to a damaged water main at the intersection of Westgate and Barxstel Boulevard, had a cost of $31,808.42. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate an additional $185,000 to come from the Riverboat Capital Gaming Improvements Fund to be used to supplement the 3.3 million already appropriated for design and survey of the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance declaring the Fort Smith Pool and Pool House building surplus and authorizing demolition of the pool and pool house building and the reauthorization of $75,000 from the 2016 capital funds for this use. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Floor is open for comments. No comments? Please cast your vote, Council.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds for the construction cost of the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade project for an estimated cost of $14 million. Funds to come from the 2017 LDEQ loan, CS221103-03, and the 2014 utility bond. First reading.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Council? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer due to a resignation for, for the promotion of two police sergeants due to a demotion. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill one vacancy in the Public Works Department. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for walk-ons Independence Bowl Parade, December 26, 2017.
So moved. Mayor, did y'all get that all worked out by then?
Yes, we found out that actually the paperwork had been submitted and the chief had signed it and I had to. But there were people on leave and it just didn't get processed in a proper channels. But we had approved it.
Any other discussion on this item? Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote, Council.
Reappointment of Michael Vorture as a representative for the MPC Board of Adjustments. Appointment effective November 1, 2017, and expires October 31, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Approve meeting change of Bossier City Council regular meeting from January 2, 2018, to January 3, 2018, 3:00 PM due to a declared holiday by the governor and the mayor.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to limit vehicle access into Beauclaire subdivision, Bossier City, Louisiana.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Sam, where is this? What's the problem?
It's a new subdivision in South Bossier, Beauclaire subdivision. It's over near South Fork Estates and River Bend subdivision. There was a little confusion between the developer and their engineering company. Each one thought the other one was applying for this, and neither one had. So they contacted me and I held our requisite public hearing. It was received a favorable recognition from, from the board. And it was added today. It is constructed now, and I believe they've been in contact with the public safety folks. Correct type of hardware and stuff to be installed on the gate.
So it's a gated community?
Yes, sir.
This is right in line with all the other gated communities in the city?
Yes, it, it follows the same standards. All of them have to follow the same ordinance, same type of equipment to be installed on the gate, same type of insurance.
Thank you so much. We have a motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Erwin. Any other comments by the public? Please cast your vote. Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, I, y'all may or may not get the notice, but tomorrow at 2 o'clock upstairs in the council area, we're having our Christmas, your Christmas party, and none of y'all are invited.[1796.38][1796.38](laughing)
Even these are.
My hamburger.
I love crashing parties.
Well, thank you for that uninvite, Mayor.
I guess you did want to know whether we wanted to come or not.
He wants to drink all the whiskey by himself. That's what we're doing.
Counsel, as you know, next week, we do not have a meeting, but the next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 3, 2018, at 3:00 PM. So the very next meeting we'll have in the new year, 2018, on the 3rd of January. And I don't think there's any other announcements. Excuse me?
Agenda items.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead and announce that again.
All the agenda items for the January 3 meeting must be turned in by December 28 at noon so that we can do the state advertising requirements.
All right. So I would like to wish, on behalf of the City Council, everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Hey, Jeff, I have one thing.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Pam, I remembered what it was. And I, I might as well say it here because I'll probably forget by the time I walk down from the podium. But the bus stops, I don't know if you've noticed, but several people had pointed out, and they're by our office as well, you have children crossing the street. Did you know all the bus stops now are on the west side of Benton Road? I mean, that, just from a safety perspective, I don't know why, what the difference is. I would certainly think that it would be safer on the east side of Benton Road than to have people trying to cross five lanes of traffic with. Yeah, I mean, they just went up and it just.
Put signs.
I don't understand. I mean, huh?
They put signs, like Old Winne Road.
Yeah, but they're on the west side of Benton Road, and these people are running across five lanes of traffic with, you know how fast people go on Benton Road?
That's the first I've heard of that.
Yeah, if we wouldn't mind, just take a look at that. I think it would make more sense that if they would be on the east side of Benton Road. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, we got calls from Old Winne Road. They just stuck a sign in the yard and, like, she wasn't too happy. But, you know, she thought a lot of trash and clutter would be on the yard. But I go by yesterday, there was one piece of paper down the ground. So evidently, that's under control.
Well, I mean, but like where our office is, that's commercial on the other side. All concrete. And there are other places, you know what I mean? Along Benton, anyway. Hate to see something happen to someone, you know, trying to catch the bus, so.
That's important. If there's nothing else, this meeting stands adjourned.